Back to public discussion, public discussion. Now it's going to generate a bid.
There's two on six and one on seven. I don't know whether they have the second one in here, so I'm just going to go with all. That's just how it was mailed to us was saying it was six. Six is the generator and installation and seven is just the installation on the existing thing.
That's pretty heavy for me.
It's the only way we can get to the job sometimes.
Yes. Bid number seventeen dash zero zero seven, Senator Electric. Thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five.
Thirty-seven thousand what?
Seven hundred and forty-five, right.
And I did not text them and remind them.
Fairgrounds. I actually have talked to the fairgrounds already, so.
I like collapses by the way, because you're older.
I am, every day.
Older and wiser, right?
I don't want to be wiser. With the older, I got that down. This is bid number seventeen dash zero zero six. Forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-five. I'm actually going to be forty in December.
Oh my goodness, finally. You know, oh, in church Sunday, they said you were a young man until you're forty, so you normally got a little bit longer to be a young man.
A little stall. This is from Faith Electric Incorporated, and they had. I'm just proud because my mom told me when I went live to be twenty-one, so I've exceeded my time limit.
Your mother's working more than that.
There is two packets aside.
I assume they're going to be, you know, like, that's it. What was he got?
Seventeen zero zero six. Twenty-five years ago, me and Reggie was hiding fish in Jay's barn.
Hiding the fish?
Yeah.
That ain't no way it is.
It's a long story. It's forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. And this one is... This is the one installed.
That's generator installed?
Yep. This is, uh... Seventeen dash zero zero seven, it's twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven. Barry did come by the barn today. Have a good one, let him speak, right?
Sure.
Go ahead, Barry, tell us.
I met with the, uh, someone from the engineering department at AEC either Tuesday or Wednesday last week. And... We met out at the fairgrounds. And we discussed the services of both, at both generators' locations. And in our conversation, I said, has anybody talked to you about this? And they said, no. You're the first one.
Greg Getz from AEC came out before we bid this. He did come out with this because I was actually there at that with the fair board and manager, and Greg came and... Because he actually, AEC's going to move some poles and stuff.
Yeah. I met with him, and I said, has anybody else, like, electrical contractor talked to you?
Oh, well, I thought you meant.
It was, no, it was another fellow, and it was a younger guy in the engineering department. I can't remember his name.
Clint Reen?
Clint Reen?
Reen?
That might be.
Or Brandon, Brandon's in the engineering.
He's, he's on the fire department, I know that.
Clint, yeah, Clint's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bald-headed with a goatee?
He has a goatee.
He had bald head one, probably.
He had all of that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is Clint.
Okay, and I just said, has anybody talked to you guys as far as electrical contractor? And he said, no, he said, you're the first one. And I was told that the other contractor that's bidding against me had turned in a bid a week prior to me meeting with them guys out there. So my concern to you guys and the fair board would be, are they going to hit you with an axer later? Or have they included everything? What we have, our discussion, uh, the other day, what it entailed was they're going to replace that pole and the risers. It's our responsibility to build back everything that's there as far as, from the transformers down to the setter rack for, for the transfer switches. And a turnkey job from one end to the other. And my question is, is that what the other fellow bid against us?
That I do not know. Did he turn his bid in, the other guy? We barely... I guess it won't matter, sealed either way, even if he did, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there'll be a pipe sample on there if someone came in.
I get, it really don't matter, I guess, as long as it's sealed, but... But that's, that's a good question to ask.
Does it have that in those papers?
Because Ben's is bid, they're going to have to do a turnkey deal, I mean... I'll make the motion to table this, to find this information out.
I don't see any.
Yeah. Yes, I'll move.
Thank you, fellas.
Oh, favor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All favor, aye. Because, I mean, we don't want any additional bills in this case.
Samples? Table to review, table to review this further?
Yes, ma'am. That's what he was telling me, you have to change stuff on inside the building, that was right. Number generator up. Um, when I was there with Greg Getz, it sounded like they were going to change everything to the new pole, and then after that, that... There wouldn't be no change, and that's the reason they wanted to use a different generator on the new building than this. And if they used this one on the new building, they would have to change things. But by swapping, we did not have to. But I can double-check all that with Greg. You know, I, I, you know, I don't know, Frank, I drug him last minute, he may not know the details of facts like Greg did. All right. Greg's middle manager now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw him through the bar downstairs, or what?
Sorry.
I just think it's a lot of hot air.
It wasn't hot enough to do it.
In a minute. Throwing things around.
Looked my little one there.
Nine o'clock tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's call it. Yeah. I'm moving for the approval. Second.
There's a top over there, it's fresh juice.
All in favor?
While you are arguing that, I got the option period stuff, can I come and see? I would like to do it this week, so when the auditors come next week... I'd actually want to consider my office for audit. Then I'll come anytime.
Option period for what?
Insurance.
Option range, morning, come anytime.
Do I, sorry?
Option range, morning, come anytime. I'm going to range out more night, though.
I know, it's not a fun game.
You just tell me when, so I can notify the guys who do that.
Here, tell me. Jay's gonna, um, not do tomorrow morning. So if one of you two want to do tomorrow morning, I'll be there first thing.
I'll do tomorrow morning.
What time?
I'm Julio.
Julio? Maybe they're Hawaii, the people?
That's Mexico.
Oh. Seven o'clock, six o'clock, five o'clock?
If you got five o'clock, you're going to be there by yourself.
All right, I'll be there.
Seven o'clock's fine on me.
Seven o'clock.
All right, I mean, is that too early for you, because you know when I come?
I was just going to say six-thirty.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I... I'm just trying to be fair.
Um, so everyone, you want me?
When, when you want to come?
You want, you want, tomorrow's Tuesday, Jay's thinking about Wednesday morning. You want Thursday morning?
Be fine.
Or is, or is, like, evening's better before you guys go home?
No, morning, we got it.
So you want... Well...
Tomorrow, you got exercise board meeting?
Yeah, I'll be done. I mean, I'll be still camp here, so that one.
I know I got four going tomorrow, so actually I don't.
Well, you never know about my current grade.
Let me wait till I hear from Jay then, and then I'll do you the opposite of Jay then.
Okay.
So it'll either be Wednesday morning, or it'll be Thursday morning. Jay's going to talk to his guys as soon as he gets back up there. And then I'll do, but I said I can do evenings whenever it's necessary, guys.
We need to talk on, uh, the retirement, too.
Yes, sir. Definitely got all that in my file.
Because I told them, you need to do it two years ahead of time, and they just told me I didn't know anything, so.
Kind of what I got.
No, you don't have to do that, I got it.
Okay. I got the seminar schedule, um, printed out, and I got the stuff that I got from the retirement meeting. So, um, yep, we're going to discuss that also.
Well, nobody told me, but I have been hearing through the grapevine that someone were talking about it. Underpoint, I don't care.
No.
But I didn't, if you don't know, you're pretty good time ahead of time, so I make them all stay there.
Yep. Well, you can get your jet ones down there. If I need to go to Jet, I can go there.
Oh, you're right, or go. Holy cow.
Yeah, that's kind of what I got.
What? One of the biggest three gates.
There's multiple gates on there. When they put it on, he just said that he put it on for one gate, but when he did, it was.
Good catch, though. Cut the commissioner gate. Seen low excess, he wins. Remember when you have to, you used to have to do that yourself? Who's having them all doing?
I could look down that pantry on the outside a few years ago, see how crooked it is.
You can get more cows than I've got with him.
Yeah.
Plus it bows in, then it slides.
Then it's got to go out somewhere, so, see. If it bows in, then it bows out two places.
It goes in and out, and in and out, so you get a trip to corn.
Did Jay build that fence?
No, I didn't build it.
I told my daddy, he can put more weed in if it grows.
You look good.
I can do that for you by morning.
I can too, I can do it for the work.
I am this year. We always did so much. This is full to my GPS, and the steering ball went out.
Oh, you gotta do it from the key to your bench, you know, like in the record.
Yeah, I'm still waiting on John there to get that five thousand dollar valve. For one little valve that's this big, it's five thousand dollars. I'll just drive. That's what I've been doing.
They wouldn't have it, they'd have to order it from.
Heck, no, they don't. I'm like, man, it's many tractors run around GPS, I cannot believe you don't stock that.
They didn't even have rubber boots to go on a drill.
You need some?
Well, I know, after he told me what they cost.
I got some muck ones, and I got some off-brand, I love, you know, ones.
I think I got that.
I almost got some purple boot.
I think I got that ten or twelve.
Do you?
Yeah.
Had some in the green, you know, same international reel.
Yeah.
Sixty dollars, forty-six feet thick. Ten dollar, or eight dollars to.
That's size twelve.
Well, very, little, never fair.
There it is.
We should just order them for him, I think, I think.
They're really having a negotiating mood that's on there, though. I don't know if they're in financial trouble, or since the... They say they are, and then the shame, Luke.
They give me a new fuel truck to replace the one I did bought. It's a full bird nest.
Really?
Yeah. They put a pump on it, I kept on them, it wouldn't pump. Hillary called me, and he, I went over and he had something, he fished it out, it was a bird nest, and it's all floating. He said, the company, he said, just give me another one, they wanted back to cut us apart.
Yeah, had a bird nest on the inside, then.
Yeah.
Should I see that Marcy's, um, retirement thing is the sixth? Yeah, it's sixth. Marcy worked it out, unless she.
She's retiring?
Yeah.
So did you hire the other girl? Cheap as we is, I may have to go apply.
In fact, you're tying to a heart, cattle prices are down, we need salmon oil's down.
Milo's down.
Cows down.
You ain't opening up the paper? I could write good stories on these commissioners, I'll sell some papers for you, buddy. I did not say they'd be completely true, but they'll darn sure sell some papers.
Want to put your name on it, and you have some, uh, liability.
Hey, your boss used to do that, he told me that. He said, well, technically, that was sad.
Yeah, he could start the fire.
What, he could? Yeah. Right on the internet, must be true. Yeah.
That was taken. Only no offense. All right, I really enjoyed putting on a team that had Fox News on two campuses today, to see who these, these sides had that one.
Only one person to watch. Yeah, we're going to ask for a none above mark on the ballot. Boy, what I'd do for a Ronald Reagan to step in. Hope going to town this morning. Weekend, there's forty-five shootings in Chicago, four deaths.
This morning?
Well, the weekend. Four of them died. That narrative's put on TV, on. Oops.
Okay, all the time.
I'm moving for the approval. Second. All in favor? You don't have any?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you got plenty of matches. Well, I thought the senators will let her slip away if they end. That's getting pretty bad. At one point, it outscored them forty-two to thirty, just like, was making it look easy. Stevens forward.
No, who's the?
Oh, Amos. Defense is terrible.
I looked at a tire, and I think it's covering great.
Well done, Ramones. I just went to car racing, didn't pay attention on that. Don't tell me nobody about that. I think I lost my roof.
Okay.
All in favor? No road crossings.
Yay! You didn't get it, Phil, son.
I'm wild. Appropriations. I get chewed out more for road crossings than anything I think you do. Every time, it causes some issue.
Yeah.
We're going to fill right here with tail, aren't we? Well, I saw your name in Cherokee paper, Jennifer's name. Wasn't divorced in the, was she?
No, yes, okay.
Very good for you, you're retiring.
That's why I thought she might get rid of you, she said, he ain't got a paycheck no more, he's a farmer now. Somebody sent me a deal, farmers, uh, work four hundred hours a week. How'd that go? It was funny. Then people brag about unsafe food, foods, or something, I had to get that again, it was... It's lower every month. Yeah, it is. It's our standard right spot this time.
I'm still proud of you.
That's what I was looking at, okay, it's like, fun right spot this time.
I'm working right October already.
Yeah, it is. Granite Telecom.
They don't have one.
What'd you say, the auditors supposed to be here?
Cory's going to be here tomorrow and Wednesday to get stuff, to get information from Valerie and I.
And if they come back eleven?
Mm-hmm, they'll, we'll sign the paper, the letter of intent on the eleventh, and they will get started.
No.
I wonder how quick some Mike Stevens has to come back down from Fox. I'll give that a try, see if that helps.
So if you have, right, and the balls of Mike Stevens, get on. Oh, yeah. Clintons, who had no DCH, has a great one every year, lose eight starters last year, look just as good this year. Mike Stevens is back, and my defense is, I'm under a grass.
So you text him where he's been? Like, every time, it's been like a year recently, every time, I've reminded that, uh, Coach is about to be retired. Come out and play right at D W. Keep your job for another year. Some of the donors are going to talk to you, though. It might be about time Bob did. I something to be, if.
No. Les Miles is a very good guy, yeah. No. You know, Mike Gundy's had more victories than Les Miles over there in O S U. He's a chief builder, I can tell. No, no, no.
Mickey Riley's about the only one on the path that I can see having a chance of getting a head cut.
Yeah, and I just, I don't know that he's ready for that. That's a long ways from playing, calling plays.
Right.
You going to say anything about this conversation? I'm moving for your approval.
Completely breaking.
All in favor? Aye.
Quit doing that air raid offense. If you go to, you know, run the ball quicker than him, then, well, then I would should go back to the air raid offense.
Yeah. I still say that Bob's won as many Big Twelve, he's won more Big Twelve championships than he in the program, I mean... Be careful what he asks for change. Remember when Michigan won the long car out, what they went through for the next ten years?
For that.
Yes. USC. We need Pete Carroll out of here, too many issues, and what they have to be like. Make a motion for approval, Dan.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Allocation, not all beverages changed.
I don't think we're there, we're there, we're not.
You know, I think it's more, it's more, used to, you had to worry about Nebraska, Texas, you honestly did not worry about every game. All the teams were ungood across the board like they are now.
Baylor wasn't good.
No. Well, even far as Oklahoma State, honestly, when I was growing up, we never thought twice about Oklahoma State. I mean, I know they are now, but... Oklahoma State would be ahead to the fourth quarter of the league, if I was growing up. Yeah, but when I was growing up, in mid-seventies to the nineties, we never lost to them. I mean, Kansas, Kansas, that ain't much to approve. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. They don't have to worry about that. Oh, you're with K U, then we're going to be in trouble.
Yeah, but K State, you do now.
K State, they're contenders, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. They won last time, they're in the war, but. I love that game, Travis.
There's two companies I can pair.
You guys just need to go higher. Alabama's coaching with your team.
Alabama's coaching, like, your team, spent ten million for them.
They would take Bill Niner any day, K State.
Yeah, because he does it with nothing, if you had athletes like OU had.
I'd take that. They'd go double check.
Yeah.
New England right now.
Yeah.
Even though they lost yesterday, but.
Shut out.
A third string quarterback.
Yeah.
A lot of stamps on one page, Major.
I'm sorry, do what?
A lot of sit stamps sitting on a one page.
It's all just chairman and stuff? That's awesome.
You could sign my file.
A lot of stamps.
Not at all.
Kyle broke my other stamp, take it over there to have it re-picked and break, so.
I think I touched it.
Well, that's probably it, you probably threw it, I can use it, you didn't touch it.
I don't like that either. This thing's full of water, too.
What did you refer, that was like, four years ago when I bought that. I'll be back.